Thank you, Mr Taylor. We have the minutes of the meeting which took place on the 21st of February 2017. You have them with your agenda. Are you agreed that I sign these as a correct record?
Agreed.
Thank you very much, I will sign those later. Mr Taylor, are there any apologies for absence?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. We have received apologies from councillors David Els, Michael Goodridge, Val Henry, Martin Lear, Denise Legault, Andy MacLeod, Stephen Melina and John Ward. Additionally, councillor Mary Forrowseski also gives apologies that she will be leaving the meeting early to attend a civic engagement that has been in the diary for some time.
Thank you very much. We move on to declarations of interest. In accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do members have any non pecuniary or disclosable pecuniary interest to declare? Mr Taylor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. With regard to Executive Minute Number 168 relating to the calling of the Dunsfold Park application, the following interests have been declared. Councillor Kevin Deane has declared a non pecuniary interest and will leave the chamber for consideration because he considers his interest to have significant weight as to undermine his ability to make an objective decision. Councillor John Gray has declared a non pecuniary interest as he declared the same at the Joint Planning Committee, which determined the application, he will remain in the meeting. Councillor Richard Seaborn has declared a non pecuniary interest as Vice Chairman of the Bramley Parish Council, which takes a different stance to Waverley on this matter, he will remain in the chamber. Councillors Jeanette and Stenat have declared a pecuniary interest in Executive Minute Number 161 regarding enforcement action but will remain in the chamber as there will be no discussion on this item this evening. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Taylor. I see councillor Byham has put his hand up.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Sorry, I didn't respond earlier. Also on Item 168 please, as a member of Bramley Parish Council, a non pecuniary interest.
Thank you. Are there any other declarations? No, we move on to my announcements. There will be a short pause while I get my phone ready. Fine, very well. First of all, I should like to say thank you to all of those of you who have given me your good wishes on the operation I had on my foot and which I'm pleased to say I'm recovering from reasonably well. Touching wood. But I do appreciate the very kind thoughts. Secondly, we, my wife and I, were invited to the Farnham Rugby Club a couple of Saturdays ago for the semi-final of the Rugby Football Union Senior Vars. And I'm very pleased to tell you that Farnham beat the team from Cornwall, Saltash, and are now in the final, which will take place on May 6th at Twickenham. So, those of you who like rugby, we've bought our tickets, so come and support Farnham Rugby Club in their really wonderful result that they've achieved. On Friday, we went to the cathedral in order to see the installation of the new High Sheriff for Surrey. And that's of interest to us because Robert Napier, who is the new High Sheriff, lives in Waverley. He lives very near Cranley at Bayard, is that what it's called, Pat? I'll look at you. And I know that he has already been to visit Julia and is looking forward to meeting Simon for next year. On my charity front, the barn dance which we held was very successful and thank you all of you who either attended or supported it in another way. I had gifts of wine and donations and so on, so thank you all very much for that. I've recently emailed you all to tell you about a charity bicycle ride which is taking place in Farnham later on and I appreciate any sponsorships that you might want to do for that. I did send a link, I'm happy to send a link again if anybody wants that. The King Edward School in Whitely has recently celebrated its 150th anniversary of moving from Bridewell in London to Whitely and we were very pleased to attend a service in Southwark Cathedral to celebrate that, followed by lunch at the Guildhall. And also to attend the week following that, the planting of a holly tree to commemorate the event in the school grounds. I'd like to just mention the county council elections. Several of our members are standing and being completely non partisan, I will wish all of those who are standing from whichever party, good luck. One of our councillors is celebrating a round number birthday this week, so happy birthday, Liz, and I hope you enjoy the day. And then lastly, my wife tells me that on the internet today, she saw that it was World Penguin Day. So I'd like to wish you all a happy Penguin Day and just remember there are other chocolate biscuits available. Mr Taylor, are there any questions from members of the public?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. One question has been received from the Cranley Civic Society. The question and answer have been tabled and placed on the Waverley website.
Thank you. Have any questions been received from members?
Mr Mayor, a question has been received from councillor Robert Knowles, the contents of which are set out in the agenda papers. The answer has been tabled this evening and will be added to the website.
Thank you. And have there been any motions from members?
None received, Mr Mayor.
We move on to Item 8, minutes of the executive and committees. The minutes of the executive, the leader of the council to present.
Mr Mayor, thank you. I am pleased to present the minutes of the executive meeting held on the 7th of March and I believe I have a seconder.
Mr Mayor, I'm happy to second.
Thank you. Items in Part 1, recommendations to the council, start with Item 152, which is the Budget Management Report. And this contains a number of viadments and an update to the 2016-17 budget forecast for both the general fund and the housing revenue account, up to and including forecast to the 31st of March 2017. As I say, this does contain a number of viadments and some rescheduling of certain areas of council business. Mr Mayor, I'm not aware of any speakers on this item.
You may not be aware of any, but let's see whether there are any. Would anybody like to speak on this item? No, it doesn't look like it. So we'll move straight on to the recommendations, which are on page 21 of your agenda papers. Recommendations 124, 125, 126 and 127. Are they all agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Leader.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Item 153 is amendments to Waverley's off-street parking order and that is detailing the consultation feedback. So, Waverley's parking order outlines the regulations for all off-street parking places within the borough and it's a necessary document so that customers actually understand how to use the car parks and that any breaches in usage can be penalised both fairly and robustly. Mr Mayor, sorry, I was going to say I'm not aware of speakers but...
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? No, in which case we move to the recommendation on page 22, Recommendation 128, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Leader.
Thank you. Item 154 is the first of two conservation area appraisals. We've brought a number before council over the last few months, Mr Mayor, and the first one before you tonight on Item 154 is the Dunsfold Conservation Area Appraisal.
Do we have anyone wish to speak on this? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Sorry. Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. As the leader said, we've had a number of these before the council, this one is particularly interesting. Historically, Dunsfold consisted of a number of clearings along the Central Road for agriculture, was first mentioned in the 12th century following the discovery of ironstone. By the 15th and 16th century, it thrived on several ironworks in the area. Burlington Manor, which is not included in the conservation area, survives from this time. In 1814, the area was connected to London by the Way and Aron Canal. The earliest building within the CA is Forge Cottage dating 1254. The CA first identified 40 years ago runs from north to south along the road, including two ponds to the north and the majority of housing to the west. There are 11 Grade 2 buildings, there were five extensions proposed and three removals proposed from the CA. Following the consultation, one removal, Gorseview and Ponside is proposed to be retained. The recommendations cover all the remaining removals. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors wish to speak? In that case, we move to the recommendation on page 23, Recommendation 129. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And the second of our conservation area appraisals is the Dunsfold Church Conservation Area. And again, it's really key to adopting this appraisal as it can be used in terms of being a material consideration in the determination of planning applications and when we look at planning permissions and any listed building consents within that area.
Well, what a surprise. Councillor Adams.
Thank you again for your indulgence, Mr Mayor. The Dunsfold Church Conservation Area lies about a third of a mile to the west of Dunsfold Village, is a compact and discreet enclave in the countryside with no three roads. It consists of a group of ecclesiastical and agricultural buildings. The church was built in 1270/1290 and is considered a rarity due to its completeness despite later alterations. Originally in royal gift, the church is, it passed through several keepers reverting to the crown in 1536, where it remains today. Major restoration work occurred between 1881 and 1893 and the church is little changed since. Apart from the church, the oldest building in this CA is the old rectory, a 15th century large timber-framed house. There are workers' cottages and new rectory built in the 1960s. So this recommendation is determining the boundary of the CA up to date. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Adams. Does anyone else wish to speak? No? In which case we move to the recommendation on page 24, Recommendation 130. Is it agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. That's the end of Part 1. Leader, Part 2.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We have a number of matters of report within Part 2 and I understand we have a speaker, councillor Knowles, on Item 156, which is the Forward Programme.
Thank you, Leader. Councillor Knowles.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. It's a matter under the economic development portfolio. If I could draw your attention to the situation in Hazlemere where another bank is about to close and the one remaining post office is also closing. I think a reflection of the residents that use these facilities is the number of patients registered at a health centre, which only covers Hazlemere very tightly, not even hind it, where there are 19,000 registered patients. So that catchment area, I think, is a good indication. The HSBC Bank was shortly closed and I know in a letter to the leader, they said it was fine because their customers could use the post office. Well, that will be somewhat difficult as the one remaining one is about to close, whereas Hazlemere used to have seven. So could I ask, under the economic development strategy that I see in the papers, can I ask what action the portfolio holder has taken regarding the imminent loss of these vital services in Hazlemere, which is shortly to have no post office at all?
Thank you, Councillor Knowles. Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to defer to the portfolio holder for economic development. I would point out that obviously the council have limited powers, as councillor Knowles will be aware, but we will lobby clearly in terms of the post office once we've been informed, but councillor Bolton, I think, has some more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and to councillor Knowles for asking the question. Banks and the post office are essential to the good working of commerce and the economic development of any community. I'm aware that banks close branches and there are plans for such in Hazlemere. Typically, banks cite the growth of telephone and online banking in recent years for the closures, which has, quote, "naturally resulted in some of our branches being less used". There have also been reports about the post office closing. A post office spokesman told the press, quote, "We are committed to maintaining a post office in Hazlemere. The branch is run by a temporary postmaster and we are looking for a permanent solution". I go on to quote, "We are also working hard to restore post office services to lion green. We are not yet in a position to begin any public consultation on any plans", unquote. Banks do not generally warn the council when they are going to close, whereas post offices are obliged to. And I know this from personal experience in Godleming, where the post office was proposing to move a branch and we were inundated with the opportunity to comment on that. Waverley has a good relationship with the Hazlemere Chamber of Commerce. We will do our utmost, working with the chamber, to prevent any closures. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Catherine Bott. Leader.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As I say, there are a number of other items to note on this report and there is one which is in exempt for a supplementary estimate to cover enforcement action. I don't intend to go into exempt and we've had, as far as I'm aware, there are no speakers on that. So that concludes, with your indulgence, Mr Mayor, the minutes of the report of the 7th of March, executive. Thank you.
Thank you. Are those notes agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Leader, the meeting of the 25th of April, sorry, the 4th of April.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm pleased to move the minutes for the executive held on the 4th of April and I believe I have a seconder.
Again, I'm happy to second.
Thank you. The first item, which is Item 165, is the overview and scrutiny changes to the constitution. And at the council meeting in February, council gave approval to the new overview and scrutiny arrangements, which will come into effect in our new council year in May. And the constitution special interest group, which is a cross-party special interest group, met on the 14th of March and reviewed a number of the amendments that are required to the constitution and also the procedural rules to reflect the revised ways of working. Now, these are set out in detail at Annex 1. Just to be clear for members, only extracts from the constitution where changes are proposed have been included in your agenda. Once the amendments to the constitution have been adopted, the various documents will be formatted and published in accordance with the council brand guidelines. What I also want to just reiterate is that as an additional check step at that stage, I've asked both councillor Gray, in his capacity as chairman of the Audit Committee, and councillor Goodridge, in his capacity as chairman of the Standards Committee, to actually basically undertake a final proof of those documents prior to them going live. So we've got a final and an additional check and balance in the procedure of this revised constitution. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank everyone involved because this has been, on the part of both members and officers, a huge piece of work. And we've driven forward over the last few months on a very ambitious change programme for overview and scrutiny at Waverley, which really started about 18 months ago now with the initial review of scrutiny that was undertaken by councillor Frost and the then scrutiny review panel. And a lot of this has led from there and it led us to look at our whole process, a process that we'd not reviewed for a number of years, and our ways of working, it led us to look in great detail at best practice within other councils. And it's led us to actually take on board a number of changes to the way in which scrutiny will work. We've recruited a dedicated scrutiny officer, he's now been with us for the past two months and I know he's commenced and now is at a stage where he's ready for the start of the new scrutiny panels. We've established four new committees aligned to the corporate objectives. We've established an informal coordinating board to actually collectively develop an overall programme of scrutiny activity that really will make a difference to Waverley and that everyone, in terms of our councillors, can work and feed into, so that we're actually looking and reviewing and scrutinising the topics that we know our residents actually want us to focus on. And we've also made sure that we're including and really bringing forward a much more positive and ambitious culture in respect of scrutiny. So I'm pleased to see that all these recommendations really are coming to fruition. As I say, there's been an awful lot of work by a number of members. I'd like personally to thank all those who've sat on the Constitution Sig. I'd like to also thank the scrutiny review panel before that and all the officers from democratic services to the legal team and so forth, who've been involved in really helping us bring this forward and to actually make this happen. And I would just like to take this opportunity to actually stress to you how important the informal coordinating board will be. And I'd really like all members who are nominated to serve on it to really make the most of that opportunity so that we can really rise to the challenge and deliver what needs to be and what our residents want to see, which is really excellent scrutiny in Waverley. Mr Mayor, that's all I've got to say on this. I understand that councillor Gray has requested to speak to an amendment. Thank you.
Yes, that's my understanding. Councillor Gray.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Leader. I'm proposing a small amendment to this. I think this is an excellent document. As the leader says, it incorporates a lot of work and incorporates a lot of hope for future scrutiny. I've had a look at this in respect of audit and I think a small change is needed in the terms of reference for the coordinating board. I'm making this as a proposal and I have a seconder, I believe.
Happy to second, Mr Mayor.
Okay, I think Emma's going to put up, oh, if we can read this. I'll read it out and... Has that got the read in as well?
Yes.
It has, okay. If I read the first one, "The chairman and vice-chairman of the Audit Committee may be invited to attend the board on an ad hoc basis when the subject matter is such that the contribution would assist with the allocation of items to the future work programme." It's a relatively small and subtle change and we're proposing the change to be, "The chairman and vice-chairman of the Audit Committee may, with the agreement of the chairman of the board, attend meetings when the subject matter is such that their contribution would assist with the allocation or addition of items to the future work programme." If I could just give you the background, this is not something that's only come up in the last few days. I have been discussing it with officers since the report came out. The original ONS report, produced by councillor Frost, went a lot further as far as the relationship with audit and ONS is concerned. I think what we've got here in the amendment is an appropriate subtle change which allows ONS and audit to cooperate and I think it's important that those two bodies do cooperate. It allows audit to pick up matters where they're suited to follow it up and it allows audit to refer matters to ONS when it's not within their remit. And I think there's a good example in the audit minutes, which I might refer to later. That, Mr Mayor, is all really I want to say and I propose the amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Seaborn, do you wish to speak in seconding?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Ladies and gentlemen, does anyone wish to speak to this amendment? Councillor Frost.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Mayor. I do support this amendment because this was one of the things that came out very clearly when we did the first working party in looking at scrutiny and it was a disappointment when in fact it wasn't carried through. I don't think it was deliberate, I think it got diluted in everything else that was going on because, as you said earlier, this was a great piece of work. But one of the things that I would say is that in that... But one of the things that I would say is that in that original panel, we did stress that all reports, and by that I'm also at the moment referring to the new Constitution, should be clear and plain English, because we tend to forget that and we tend to go into councilies. So I think that is something which we need to be aware of, but I do support the amendment.
Thank you, councillor Frost. Councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I think I would support that, but I've been trying to look through the new terms of reference, and I'm not sure it actually mentions anywhere a chairman of the coordinating board, which means that we're asking for the assent of someone who doesn't exist, and so we'd have to cover that aspect possibly, but I'm looking for advice on that. If someone could point out whether we have got anything in the terms of reference for there to be a chairman and how that would be appointed. We would assume there would be one, but there's nothing in there, and I don't know that we can do that unless we've mentioned it already in the terms of reference perhaps. But I would fully support that, obviously, if everything's clean.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. I'm sure that will be checked. Councillor Williamson.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I think the chairman was actually fully discussed in the Sig meeting. However, I fully support the proposed amendment, though we need to be very careful, because the roles of audit and the roles of overview and scrutiny are separate and need to be kept separate. That's not to say that they can't work together and shouldn't work together, but we just need to be very careful that we don't merge the two. And I think the wording of that probably allows that to be clear.
Just coming back to councillor Hyman. On page 157 of the Agenda Papers, at the bottom of the page, "The board will appoint a chairman at the first meeting of each council year, and subject to the total number of opposition members on the council reaching 10%, the chairman of the board will be nominated by the leader of the principal opposition group."
I trust that's what you needed.
Are there any other speakers on the amendment? I can't see any. So councillor Gray, do you wish to sum up?
I was just about to say no, but I thought I'd better stand up and say something. I certainly agree with the comment from councillor Williamson that the Audit Committee in its prime role and the ONS in its prime role should be kept separate. But there is times when the Audit Committee needs to do reviews, and it would be wise to keep the ONS advised, and there may be times when the ONS would like to call on some of the expertise of the Audit Committee in their work. That was the reason for the interchange, but the Audit Committee will keep separate for its main functions as an independent scrutiny as far as financial matters are concerned. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, councillor Gray. Leader, do you wish to say anything before the vote?
Mr Mayor, no, thank you. I think councillor Gray summed up very well, and one of the reasons that we've discussed this over a number of weeks has actually been the point very well raised and put by councillor Williamson. So we're all very well aware that we want to make sure that we have the absolute right balance here, so we're all aware of the boundaries that need to be observed very clearly. No, thank you, Mr Mayor. I support the recommendation.
Thank you. We all have the amendment in front of you on the screen. I'm taking that on faith, because I can't see it. Is it agreed?
Agreed.
Anyone wishing to oppose or abstain? No, in this case, that is agreed. And now, would anyone like to speak to the substantive motion? Councillor Hyman.
Thank you again, Mr Mayor. Now, I understand that there are arrangements in place for the typos and errors that I'm sure most members will have noticed through this, particularly where, for instance, the number of people required for call-in has been dropped from four to three, which is helpful, but it appears it still has four in numerous places in this document still, and we can correct all those out outside of here. There's also repeated phrases, and I'm not going to go through all of them, there's quite a lot, and I understand that councillor Gray and the, who would this be? This would be the chairman of standards, would it also, is going to look at this again and make sure there's nothing that shouldn't be in there. If I can refer you to page 133, though, there are just a couple of items which I'm concerned about, which I think the council should decide. Before we just say, yes, somebody else go and sort it out, we should have these things in front of us. And at the top of 133, you'll see there's only one little bit there that's in red. It refers to the Member Officer Protocol, and if you go to the Member Officer Protocol, you find that there are one or two clashes with what we're doing here, so we need to change the other documents that go along with it, unfortunately. And an example of, I think what we've decided elsewhere, is that it says under ONS committees in the Member Officer Protocol that the chairman of the committee will ask the relevance director or head of service to present the report, and I think that a lot of people in this chamber have been asking in the past that the person on the subcommittee of ONS who has produced the report should present that to the executive. So we've got a few little tidying up exercises in various places that we need to do. One which I think concerned me slightly more, if we go to page 145, because this is a matter of people's views, halfway down page 145, Mr Mayor, there's a big red block underlined, and the last bit of it, on the last line or two, says, "The vice-chairman of the overview and scrutiny committee shall usually not be from the same political group as the chairman", and without any sort of definition of whether usually is more than half the time or occasionally or whatever it is, I think that's completely, it's not the sort of thing we should have in our constitution going forward, because obviously it's entirely open to interpretation. It's a meaningless statement as it stands. You either do or you don't, or there's some sort of arrangement for making the decision as to how you do it. So I think that needs to be tidied up, and I don't know whether any other members here would just be happy to remove, you know, recommend that going forward the word "usually" is removed, or whether we're going to get into some sort of debate as to whether it's, which I don't really think we want to do tonight here, Mr Mayor. There's a lot of little bits like that which need to be sorted out, and I think perhaps as long as we've got the leaders' agreement, that we can all input and have some debate before this is finally agreed, that would be nice. And if we try and obviously tie this up with all the other documents, I'd be happy. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. Councillor Frost.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I understand what councillor Hyman is saying, but it is very unfortunate that although we've had these papers now for 10 days, is it, that he didn't make a list of all these anomalies so that in fact they could have been given to the officers, and perhaps we could have had the answers. I really, Mr Mayor, do not want to spend my evening going through and pointing out all the things that are wrong as far as typographical errors are concerned. So could I suggest that if any member, whenever we receive our agendas, has some difficulties with the typos, et cetera, or something they don't think is right, could they refer it to the officers before the meeting? That will speed up the process of dealing with these matters. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Frost. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Leader.
Mr Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to reassure all members that, as I said earlier, we're making a number of changes tonight, and we have also said that we will review these changes ongoing, because we are very conscious that some of them are quite different, and we are, to a certain extent, we've got to change our constitution, but we also have to make sure that if aspects need to be addressed, that will happen as a matter ongoing. To councillor Hyman's point on page 145, where you're referring to midway down the page about the vice-chairman of the overview and scrutiny committee and your comments there, we discussed that at length actually at the Constitution Sig, and I'm not going to go over every point that we discussed at the Sig, because we have spent a good number of hours, as councillor Williamson will attest to, looking at this. But what we've tried to do is make sure that where possible, there is some flexibility. We're also aware that at the moment, we need to make sure that as far as possible, we have different chairs and vice-chairs, so they're not from the same political party. However, we also recognised that it may be the case, and I say it may be, because I don't think it will be the case in this council year, that we don't have an opposition who wish to take all the chairs. So we've tried, where possible, to build in some forms of flexibility. Now, the other points councillor Hyman has raised, we will duly note, and we'll make sure that those are absolutely double-checked. And again, that's another reason why, if we've also got both councillor Goodridge and councillor Gray rechecking, hopefully we've covered off absolutely everything that councillor Hyman has raised. But we have noted the comments made tonight, councillor Hyman, and I would like to assure you that those will be addressed. Mr Mayor, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Leader. Let's move to the recommendation on page 96. It's recommendation 131, making sure that we are including the revised wording agreed as the amendment. So is that resolution agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Leader, item 166.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Item 166 is a review of the scheme of delegation, and as officers and councillors, sorry, will be aware, the scheme of delegation has been in existence for a number of years, and it's been added to and amended in a very much an ad hoc manner, usually to reflect new or changing legislation. And despite all of these various changes over the years, we've never actually completely overhauled this aspect of our constitution. So the executive agreed back in February to the principles of a revised scheme of delegation that should be shorter, simpler, easier to understand, and that should facilitate quicker, informed decision-making, because that's been something that a number of our members have highlighted, as have heads of service and our directors, as an area of concern. So with this mandate and following a focused piece of work by officers, and again, across the Constitution Special Interest Group, this report puts together this revised scheme. Now, it proposes that all powers and functions are delegated to officers and heads of service, with the exception of any powers and functions that either must remain with a specific committee or with full council. And this approach to the scheme of delegation is entirely lawful, it's been adopted by many local authorities across the country. So again, I just want to reassure members that we are actually, again, looking at and did look at best practice, and again, my thanks to all on the Constitution Sig, because again, we spent a number of hours discussing this before we came to these conclusions. Now, to my point earlier on the last piece of work, because it's been turned around quickly, it will be monitored very closely. We're very keen that it is a new way of working, but we need to recognise that, again, we must make sure that if there are learnings that come from this, or we recognise areas that need to be reviewed, we will bring those forward and back to council. Mr Mayor, there are three recommendations before members tonight on that item. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Councillor Hyman.
Further to what councillor Frost said earlier, yes, I did speak to the officers earlier about a, something which was brought into the executive meeting at the very last minute. At the exec, there was a paper coming forward, which is a supplementary paper, just a sheet which had some acts on there which we would have to, which were being delegated. And there was some consternation amongst myself and others, I think, that this had come forward without anybody knowing anything about it. There was a slight problem with that, and that was very kindly tidied up by officers afterwards, where I explained that under Regulation Three of the Town and Country General Planning Act, that is the act which allows the council to make decisions, make planning decisions upon its own land, and that was being delegated to the head of housing and the strategic head of housing, and obviously that shouldn't be done. And that has been cleared up and is in your papers as having been cleared up, but it leaves us in a situation now where that page says that we are giving that person a power, except we're not giving them that power, so it's fairly meaningless, so hopefully that will be tidied up in future. But this is perhaps the sort of problem we get if things come to us at the very last minute and we don't get a chance to scrutinise them in advance. But apart from that, I think most of this makes sense, and it's good housekeeping to try and make things happen faster through the council, get things moving. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. Does anyone else wish to speak? No, in which case we move on to the recommendations on page 99, that's 132 through 134. Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Item 167.
Mr Mayor, thank you. Item 167 is an amendment to the Constitution in scheme of delegation, very much a procedural matter in that it actually relates to an amendment to our constitution, and this is in respect of planning enforcement-related matters. Mr Mayor, it's my understanding that whilst I'm presenting two recommendations, given that we've already agreed, one, recommendation 136 actually is to be deleted. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Leader has mentioned most of what I was expected to say, as I understood, but I'm sure everybody has read this and fully understands the legalese in the section. If not, I'll just summarise it in plain English. Nearly all the breaches of planning control activities are already calmed by delegated powers. This item specifically relates to S106 agreements and unilateral undertakings which have been agreed as part of a planning approval. An occasion arose when a small gap in the Constitution prevented enforcement of these agreements. This item closes that gap. Subject to consultation, it delegates the power to officers and enforcement to take appropriate legal action for the circumstances as they arise. On occasions, these actions needed to be executed with alacrity. As we have agreed, item 166, a second recommendation on page 136, on page 101 is no longer required. Indeed, it can be dispatched to room 101. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Adams. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? In which case, we move to the recommendation on page 101. Recommendation 135, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Leader. Leader.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Item 168 relates to the call-in of the Dunsfold Park planning application and the request for a supplementary estimate. Colleagues will be aware that we now have a date from the planning inspectorate for this inquiry. It's likely that this appeal will take 10 to 12 days to hear due to the scale of it and the application. So the recommendation is for a supplementary estimate of £200,000 to be approved to cover the costs of this inquiry. Now, I would remind members that this is a substantial inquiry, and it is also a significant planning application. So in addition to the costs of legal representation, council, various planning and technical consultants that are required to defend the council's resolution to grant the planning permission, that is basically why we are coming before you now requesting this sum of money. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Leader. Councillor Froschowski?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Despite a fair and democratic process that was followed and agreed at this council, I'm disappointed that we have to spend this money. I think we have much better ways of spending this sum of money on much better things, including some of the essential services for our residents. However, an independent definitive decision could prove value for money. I reluctantly support the recommendation because I think it's a poor use of taxpayers' money and regrettable. The democratic decision that was made in this council has been brought into disrepute. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? No? Thank you very much. Then, the recommendation 137 is on page 102. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. That concludes the part one of this report. Part two, Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Part two matters of report, and I'm aware of some speakers to those items, so I'll let you move forward with that, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. On item 171, on page 104, councillor Hyman has indicated he wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is something which a number of councillors on the Community Overview and Scrutiny Committee brought forward to try and get some action, and it's good that we have got a group that's going to be going forward. That's excellent. We did speak about this at the executive meeting. We had some difficulties with scoping the review for the air quality, the air quality action plan review. The first of them, the leader said she was confused about, and it would be nice if we could just clarify that confusion, and that was that when we went into this, we didn't really know whether we needed to do anything or not, because there had been an announcement, a very bold announcement in the newspaper, saying that this was the new year, saying that councillor Frost and our MP Jeremy Hunt had solved the problem, had a solution that they were going to be bringing forward in the new year. So we didn't know whether we were going to have to be doing anything. So obviously, the clarification of that is that since then, we've learned that in fact that wasn't true, and we don't have any solution coming forward. It's not going to be any time soon, or whatever, we're still in the same old situation. So it's very important that we do move forward with this, that people accept where we are.
Councillor Hyman, would you please yield, have a point of information? Councillor Frost?
Absolutely.
Very much indeed, Mr Mayor. This is a point of explanation. I did not say we would solve the problem. What we are doing was indicating that it would help to solve the problem. Nothing will solve the problem unless we do away with cars, and that is not going to happen, certainly not in Farnham. But I did not say that the pedestrianisation will solve the problem.
Thank you, councillor Frost. Councillor Hyman, you may continue.
Thank you, Chairmen. Obviously, that's slightly odd with what our MP said to the newspaper when he said this is a really big and exciting moment in Farnham's history, and a moment to deal with the biggest single bug there people have living in Farnham. It was not the impression. He said it was an exciting moment in Farnham's history. But nevertheless, the second problem there that we had was that we haven't been able to satisfy what we have as resolution six the executive made in front of us on page 104, the new Environment Overview and Scrutiny Committee to include in its rolling work programme the scrutiny of the council's annual report to DEFRA. There was one written at the beginning of February, and that was not released to us and has not been released to us. This certainly doesn't augur well for our much more positive and ambitious approach to scrutiny that the leader talks about, where we simply can't get documents that we're entitled to under access to information rules and, in many places, of our member's codes and conduct documents. But this is something which very kindly the portfolio holder, councillor Jim Edwards, said at the executive meeting that he would take up for us and get the document, or he would chase it, he didn't say he would get the documents, he doesn't make promises he might not be able to keep. He hasn't been able to, again, been refused. And we're now told that that document, the air quality action plan, is going to go to the June executive without scrutiny. This isn't what we're meant to be doing. We're meant to be scrutinising things, first of all. And, you know, I ask that in good faith, that this situation now end and you send that document out to us this evening. I don't see any reason why that document should be withheld. It's been to DEFRA and back, it's been hanging around for many, many months, and there's no reason that we shouldn't have it. And please show that, you know, we can have some faith in the overview and scrutiny system going forwards and the task group going forwards by letting us have that document. Thank you, Leader. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. Leader.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Edwards, would you like to respond, and then I'll sum up on this item?
Thank you, Leader. Mr Mayor. Yeah, in response to councillor Hyman, following the declaration of the air quality management areas, I'll call that ACMA, because I keep repeating it, okay? In 2004, an action plan was produced, and the latest update and screening assessment report, 2015, is available as a download on the Waverley Borough Council website. The 2015 assessment identified no need to proceed to a detailed assessment, and this was confirmed at that stage by the Department of Environment, Food and Rural Affairs, DEFRA. That report confirmed that there were no measured exceedances of the relevant objectives at representative locations outside of existing ACMASs in Farnham and Godoming. The 2016 air quality annual status report was drafted and submitted to DEFRA, and we have only recently received the comments on the report from DEFRA. We are now in a position to complete the report on the basis of these comments and present it, and the DEFRA feedback, to the executive at its next meeting on the 6th of June for approval. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. Leader.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So just to be clear, we've received the comments from DEFRA in the last couple of days. The head of service and his team in environmental services will now formulate and finalise the report, and that report will come to the first executive of the new council year, which is held at the beginning of June. Now, there is no reason, councillor Hyman, why you can't have that report as soon as it's available and start to look at that for your scrutiny, or whatever it is, whatever reason, you know, that obviously, you legitimately want it. But as I say, it's not that we've been withholding anything, it's, the fact is, the final report hasn't been written. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to item 172 on page 104, for which I have a number of speakers. Councillor King.
Mr Mayor, thank you very much indeed. I will be brief on this one, because I know other people want to speak on it. But I want, my purpose today is to thank the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Housing Maintenance Contract Renewal Subcommittee, it's a bit of a mouthful, for their amazing work that they did. They were thorough, they were meticulous, and it was a very onerous task, and I would like to thank them very much. This represented, to my opinion, the very best of overview and scrutiny in operation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor King. Can I just say, it's a very good job that it's me and not councillor Gates, because if you may recall, when he was mayor, he had a fine for anybody who said, "I'll be brief". Councillor Hyman?
I'm sorry, I'm saying the same thing. Just congratulations to the officers who were involved, and particularly the consultant, who was very helpful, and particularly to Richard Seaborn, councillor Richard Seaborn, who pulled all this together, and it wouldn't have been the success that it has been without him. And of course, councillor Michael Goodrich, who presented it very well to the executive meeting as well. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. Councillor Seaborn?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So having participated with a very knowledgeable and constructive subcommittee in the scrutiny of the housing maintenance contract renewal strategy, I'd make a couple of points about the resolution. Firstly, the contract renewals will require a long and complex procurement process, so I welcome the first bullet of point two of the resolution, namely that the officers are supported in obtaining the additional resources necessary to deliver the strategy. And secondly, I welcome the resolution in bullet three, whereby monitoring of the procurement process becomes an overview and scrutiny work item, thus enabling members to act as critical friends during the delivery of the strategy. I think it has been intimated by other colleagues. Overall, this is a really good example of Waverley pulling together for the benefit of our tenants. Good timely work by the housing team officers to develop an appropriate strategy, subjected to good scrutiny by the backbenchers, and a good resolution by the executive, will lead to Waverley using the right contracts and securing the right contractors for the continuance of these very important services beyond 2019. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Seaborn. Leader, do you wish to say anything?
No, I think that all I would like to say is a huge thank you, because as councillor Seaborn said, I think this is an absolute prime example of how we would like to see scrutiny working in future. An excellent piece of work. It's a great piece of work that we, as an executive, can also draw upon. And as I say, I too would just like to echo the thanks to both members and all the officers involved, because, as I say, it really has been exemplary. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Leader. I have item 175 and 176 on page 106. I have councillor Hyman saying that he may wish to speak on these two items. Do you still wish to speak on them?
It really hinged on speaking on the previous item, actually, which is the motion to go into exempt, because at the executive meeting, the way that this was dealt with, it was not possible to speak and ask whether these items should actually be an exempt, the reason being that things evolve, obviously, and I can see no reason, without any breach, I think, if people can see on page 107 in front of them, you can see that-
Please be careful.
I'm going to be extremely careful, but you will see that at 175, and I was going to speak on this but didn't at the exec, at 175, subject to something in recommendation two, then the following, it then says at recommendation five, that the decision has actually been made. So, you know, that doesn't add up to me, so there's a concern there, and I'd like the leader to take that away and think about that afterwards, because I don't think there's actually anything we're going to do tonight about it, and I don't think there's any value in us going into exempt in order to discuss that. Particularly at 176, if you look at recommendation one and the second line, you can see that the first seven words of that rather say that we are past the point, perhaps, where this should be exempt. And if this item can be debated in open, so that we can get some facts, because I understand there's some feeling out there, then that would be very nice. I don't know that there's a lot to be gained by talking about it in open session or going into exempt for it, unless we can be completely free, and I don't know whether you're going to allow us to speak freely about this. So quite clearly, though, you know, those seven words there effectively say to me, there can be no commercial confidentiality involved anymore, and I think that's the reason that we've got here, because of the situation. So I won't go any further.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. We take your point. Leader.
Mr Mayor, thank you. Councillor Hyman had a very detailed explanation at the executive about this point from the borough solicitor, and I don't intend to start opening all of that again. What I would say, just to sum this up, is that this is an exempt. We haven't resolved all these matters. These are property matters, they are sensitive, and if we do wish to discuss any of this further, we do need to go into exempt. Thank you.
Since it's a matter of report and not a matter of discussion, we will move on. Leader, is that the end of your report?
Mr Mayor, thank you. That concludes the report of the executive of the 4th of April. Thank you very much.
Is this report agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Item nine, the minutes of the audit committee. Councillor Gray. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm pleased to present the minutes of the audit committee of the 21st, 1st of March, and I have a second of.
Happy to second, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. There are no items under part one, so if we can, with your indulgence, move on to part two. And I'm not aware there are any speakers, but you may be.
Nobody has notified that they wish to speak?
Okay. I would like, if I can, just to make one point, if members could have a look at page 195 and read the comments on risk management, and I think that was a very good example of the audit committee making sure they stayed to their terms of reference. There are issues that they raised which they thought may, should be pursued further, but that would be best served in the ONS. So I'd just bring that to your attention, if you can look at it sometime and understand it. I'm sure you've all read it in very great detail prior to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gray. Are these minutes agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Item 10, there are no exempt items to consider, so thank you for attending, and this meeting is now closed.
Please rise whilst the mayor leaves the chamber.